Hello, it is 5:00 PM on Monday, October 27th, 2025. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are myself, President Bumpas, we have Director Campbell, Director Ed Skorn, Director Barnes, and Director Whitfield are on Zoom with us. We have student reps Myron Robinson and Rena Shaw-Waldman, Superintendent Sean Woodward, as well as district leadership team, school district staff, and members of the community. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Doc's website. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters. There have been previous discussions on these issues either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Okay, moving on to agenda item 2.05, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agenda dated October 27, 2025.
Was there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the agenda dated October 27, 2025 is approved. All in favor, raise your hand. We need, we need a verbal confirmation, Molly and Chuck.
Yes.
You can't see your hands.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Hey Chuck.
Hey there.
There's a hand. There's, there's a hand. All right. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Thank you.
We'll have some technical difficulties get that figured out. Chuck and Molly, we can see you, but we couldn't hear you. We saw your hand. So Jesse's working on that to make sure we can hear you. If you can check on your end.
Thanks Jeremiah. Okay, agenda item 3.01. We have student reps. Our student reps will present a report highlighting student activities throughout the district.
Okay, hi everyone. Um, so it's Sky Valley's pajama day started this week, or yeah, pajama day started this week. Spirit Week started this week. Today was pajama day. Tuesday is enchanted forest day, which is also the theme of their yearbook. Wednesday is copycat day. So that's like dressed like your friend or like a teacher. Thursday is costume day. So your Halloween costume and then Friday is decades day. In other news, November 14th, the environmental science school is hosting a fall harvest dance for grades six through 12. And the money from that will go towards field trips and things for that program. And then on November 1st, Snow Isle, Snow Isle Tech is having an open house. So students can see like programs, the campus and instructors. So that's a good opportunity for them. And then on Friday, um, Sky Valley is having a USA at 250. So that's the 250th anniversary of the United States workshop. So all regular classes are canceled and from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, um, there will be presentations and activities made by the students. And I know that ACT has a lot of presentations on like a timeline of historical events in the United States. Um, and then I know I talked about this last meeting, but just as a reminder, um, the AS Fab is taking place at, on November 7th. And so that's for juniors and seniors to, um, take a test to see if they can earn credit or meet other state testing pathways. And then, yeah, that's mostly it. I did meet with, um, the ASP on the 17th and we did brainstorm some questions for you, Sean, when, um, they meet with you in December. So that was fun.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Key Club, Key Club has a meeting tomorrow after school in room 301. There will be pumpkin carving and those carved pumpkins will get donated. Supplies and pumpkins will be provided, but you can bring your own if you so choose. Friends and family are welcome. Um, homecoming spirit week went well along with the homecoming game that our football team was able to win. So that was a good, that was pretty good. The homecoming dance itself was actually really good. We got a lot of good feedback from the students. Um, today JV and varsity girl soccer has a home game against Marysville Getchel. JV at 5:30 and varsity at 7:30. Um, with winter season right around the corner, this, these are the sports that are offered during this time of the year. Boys and girls wrestling, boys and girls basketball, boys swim and dive, gymnastics, competitive cheer, competitive dance, unified basketball, along with our new awkward sport for the girls, flag football. And yeah, that's, that's all I have.
Had a couple of questions. One was you already answered that. That was if you had a chance to meet with ASP, which is awesome to hear. And you gotta make sure you have some fun questions for Mr. Woodward as well.
Oh yeah, they were.
Good. Oh, good. I like this. That, that's a, that's a little maniacal smile on Mr. Woodward. I think that's great. And then Myron, I had a question for you was about, oh, unified basketball and girls' flag football. Do you have dates for when those are starting?
No, not yet.
Okay. All right. Thanks. December 2nd. Perfect. Look at that. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you both so much. Okay, agenda item 3.02. We have public comment. Um, we welcome and value public comment on educational issues and recognize the importance of the opportunity for members of the public to express their thoughts to the school board. It is a policy of the Monroe School District to promote mutual respectability and orderly conduct among district employees, parents, and the public. We kindly ask that you refrain from comments that violate school district policy. Individuals are asked to limit comments to three minutes. A designated speaker for a group is asked to keep comments to five minutes. If you have a personnel concern, any staff member in the room can help with how to go forward with a complaint about personnel. The board does not respond to public comments during the business meeting. Please note, board silence is neutral. It is neither the signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when it is personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, targets a protected class, or exceeds the time limit. As board president, I will determine the appropriateness of all such rulings. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone. Brandy? Brandy, um, your name and your relationship to the school district.
Uh, Brandy Blair. I'm a community member, a parent currently of four Monroe School District children, and I'm a graduate of Monroe High School. Today I am here to talk to you guys about, um, it kind of, it was great that Myron was talking about all the sports because I want to talk about no cut sports. Starting out with a story, imagine you're a seventh grader. You've played basketball for five years. You identify this as part of your personality. All your friends play, you're excited. You get to play school sports for the first time, ride the bus to games, have more fans, you get to be engaged with a positive school activity, increase your sense of belonging. You go ahead and put yourself out there, you practice, you go to tryouts, and then you're cut from the team. You're, you're not good enough. They don't need you. You're embarrassed, sad, and angry. You feel like you don't belong and you never try out again. This happens to our kids at Monroe School District because we have cut sports. Sports are a protective factor for youth mental health. It decreases their likelihood to use drugs and alcohol and contemplate suicide. Sports keeps our kids mentally and physically healthy and engaged. All kids that want to play should be able to play for the school. Sports are part of the education system. By cutting kids, uh, we are decreasing belonging and connection. We're, we're crushing them. We're comparing them, judging them, rating them, telling them they're not good enough. Today, for instance, uh, we had 23 seventh graders that tried out for volleyball at Park Place. Uh, they're only going to keep 12. So 11 of those seventh graders may never, are going to feel this way, um, this non-belonging. So a fixable issue it is, and we could implement no cut sports, um, where everyone makes the team, you implement inter or intramural sports in addition to the competitive teams. So it's a third team that, um, they don't get playing time on the varsity team. They have their own intermural team. They play each other or they can play other schools. The goal behind intermurals is for everyone to have an enjoyable supportive experience, players, coaches, referees. Um, it's a nationwide conversation right now. Many schools are implementing these intramural sports and no cuts. We already do this for some of our sport teams, cross-country football. Um, any increased costs that this might have would, uh, is well worth the benefit. If it is a cost issue, that would be prohibitive. Uh, we could fundraise, we could ask parents to play. I think we could solve that issue. Uh, I'm asking the Monroe School Board, please be on the leading edge of this issue and implement a no-cut policy for all school sports effective immediately. Again, the Monroe Middle School, I'm sorry, the Park Place Middle School, um, is having soccer and volleyball tryouts this week. The, let's try to keep these kids engaged and excited, um, instead of cutting them and damaging their relationship with school and self. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Okay, we have agenda item 4.01, consideration of amended bond election resolution 6-2025 general obligation of bonds. Is there a motion?
I moved the Monroe School District Board of Directors amend, uh, approves the amended bond resolution 6-2025 general obligation of bonds.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the amended bond election resolution 6-2025 general obligation of bonds discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Woodward, did you, uh, take a moment and just kind of clarify some of the language that you had emailed out to me and I think may probably, if you communicated to the rest of the board about just a little bit of the verbiage before we had this go to the, the voters.
Yeah, you bet. So first of all, my apologies for, um, having to bring this back in the first place. So, um, Aaron and I, as you can guess, are crosswalking all the resolution and ballot language with all of our presentations and our, our information campaign, et cetera. And I noticed the word, um, replace in, in regards to the Salem Woods Gymnasium. Um, and, and really replace would mean we were tearing down the current building and we're not really doing that. We're actually modernizing that building and then adding classroom space to it. So this, the footprint will, will be bigger since we're adding a classroom. But we're not, it's not a tear down and replacement. It's a full modernization. So definitely wanted to have that right before it went out to our voters.
Chuck or Molly, any questions?
No.
That's good to know we have audio.
Thank you for catching that.
Yeah, you bet.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Yes. Okay, the agenda item has passed five to zero. Agenda item 4.02, policy 3143. This is the second reading and notification and dissemination of information about student offenses and notification of threats of violence or harm. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to policy 3143 notification and dissemination of information about student offenses and notification of threats of violence or harm.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a note, there's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to policy 3143 notification dissemination of information about student offenses and notification of threats of violence or harm. Discussion?
Just before we vote on a couple of things, it was item D, the notification of criminal action was added as new language per RCWs. I think a couple of the questions we had was just, I saw the oven too that Molly brought up last meeting is fixed as well, which I think was just a typo issue. But really it just seems like some of the language is just updated and some of the RCWs are updated. So it's kind of a minor revision as we keep that in the rotation. Is there anything else I'm missing, Mr. Woodward on that?
No, I don't believe so.
Any questions? Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Yes.
The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item 5.09, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated October 27, 2025.
Was there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, second at the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed, uh, all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated October 27th, 2025. Discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, uh, item 5.03, um, Heather, a community member brought up, I think before the meeting, which I think was really good. There's just a concern about, um, just the dollar amount, because I know that in our, in our consent agenda, we have different items in there and there's a large dollar amount kind of in this. And so the concern is, hey, let's talk about it a little bit, just a part of our transparency issue. So Mr. Woodward, can you bring a little bit of light on that? I know we have big items in here sometimes because we have a huge budget, but, um, that's, that's a concern as well. And so if you can kind of shine some light and things related to Sky Valley, I think are also really helpful because a lot of that deals with the upcoming bond thing, ongoing issues that we've had with that. That'd be great.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you. So, so this item would just continue the board's previous emergency authorization, um, to, to do the work that's, has been ongoing at, at Sky Valley. What Adam reminded me of was the 400,000 of the 650 is work that Brenda brought up to you all. I'd forgotten about this when we did the budget extension. So the work that they, that they've been doing as they start getting into mitigating the PCVs in that building, there's just, it's just like an old house that you look into and you find more and more issues that just have to be resolved. And obviously the EPA is the compliance arm. So as we do air samples and wipe samples and give reports on the reauthorization work, they're giving us more guidance as far as things that we need to keep doing to remain in compliance with, with, with the law. So 400 of the 650 is basically work that's already been done. It, it just hasn't been, uh, it's being billed, uh, now. Um, and then the rest of it, the remaining, uh, 250 or so, that's Adam's best guess at what we might be spending in, in, in the coming years. So, uh, I also just to, uh, so you know, check with our legal team to make sure that it's okay to continue with the emergency authori- authorization route on this and, and, and it does, uh, absolutely pass muster, uh, with the legal test for that. It's a work that's been started and it's just ongoing and, and you know, just, uh, as I go out and talk with folks about the bond, this, as long as we're in that school, the work just will not stop. We're just, we're putting Band-Aids on the, uh, on the issue there.
I answered it timely, uh, that we bring this up right now too, because this is not the only part of our bond as we've talked about, but it, it's a major component of that. And this is something our community keeps asking about. I think this is a perfect example to show. One, I know that the EPA changed their standards on us. They're like, oh, they're out of compliance again. And everybody says all the things. I'm like, not really. It's just the APA lowered their standard. It's actually cleaner than it has been. But it's very expensive to keep doing that. And I think the hard part that's frustrating about it is, yeah, the building needs to go. Sky Valley is one of the gems of Monroe School District. The building is an embarrassment of the Monroe School District. And it's basically like having a bucket full of holes at the bottom because we're just bleeding money into a dilapidated building that we need to have, that actually our program deserves. And so for me, I think it's a great thing that we actually shine some light on this right now as well, just to demonstrate this building, to use a very technical term, it sucks. It really does. And our students deserve better. And so, you know, I, I think that this is an example of saying, hey, this is an area that our school needs some change in. And so hopefully that's something that our voters feel the same way about. We'll see how that goes. But this is a perfect example of we're bleeding money because of the building so that we can keep this program open. We need other options for our students. And, uh, it's, it's a lot of, uh, it's not that it's unnecessary, but it's sad that we have to spend money to keep a dilapidated building kind of limping along in order to be able to keep, um, an important program open. Um, but yeah, it's expensive. So thank you.
Thanks for that information. Shout out again, Adam and the team over at facilities. Um, okay, we have a motion on the table. Oh.
Can I just really quick, I just want to on say thank you because these were a bunch of questions that I brought up to him much earlier today and for being able to answer those because I think it's very important for the community. Because the language and everything that we had in there was a little bit confusing. And for me thinking about this, I tried to think of it as more of a change order. It's like you go in and you do work and you find things while you're working. And so then you need to amend your price. But going and checking with legal and doing all those things and just making sure that we were keeping the public apprised of, of what was going on and really clarifying that for them. Uh, I really appreciate that. And thank you Jeremiah for bringing it up at the meeting. So I didn't have to, chime in through Zoom and try to do all that. I really appreciate it.
There's a motion on the table. All in favor, raise your hand.
Yes.
The agenda item has passed five to zero. We have agenda item 6.01, superintendent update. Superintendent Woodward.
All right. So Jesse, the real test, did you actually get my shared? You always do. So thank you. Oh, but unable to open, but that, that's okay. It's bound to happen. It's never happened, Jesse. Jesse's logging back in. So what, you're, you're gonna get, I, I, I cursed it. The, um, you're gonna see our I-ready, uh, fall diagnostic results. So a couple of meetings ago, I showed you the S-BAC uh, grade level reports from the last four years or so. And I'm going to show you that I-ready diagnostic results and you'll be able to see the last five years or four years, I should, I should say. Entering into a given school year, what percentage of our students are considered tier one, tier two, and tier three as, as they start the school year? So here it is up on the big board. And you, you can see that in mathematics on the top, um, our tier one percentage has steadily increased from 65% to about 73% this fall. That just simply means that more of our students are entering the year on or near grade level in mathematics. At the same time, if you look at our most at-risk students, the tier three group, that has dropped from 17% to 12%, and that's, that's a really a nice improvement. And that also tracks with our S-BAC data that I shared a couple of, uh, weeks ago. Tier two in mathematics stays fairly consistent, which just basically tells us that, um, a, a lot of our students are jumping up from tier two to tier one and the same with, uh, from moving from tier three to tier two. So that's good news. If you look at reading, um, you saw as far as our achievement data as measured by the state grade level assessment, we were pretty flat. This tracks a, as well. And, and a slight increase here as measured by, by I-ready. So, um, this highlights, I think, an opportunity for us. If we want to see the same upward trend that we've achieved in math, we'll need to continue focusing on tier one literacy practices and, and early reading foundations. You all remember the great, um, presentation that Christine did last year and Jen on Ufly, which we've, we had the pilot last year. We're fully implementing Ufly at the, at the, is it K2, Jen and Andrea? Yeah. At the K2 level. So that definitely should help that foundational work, um, our, our, uh, as far as our, our learning results. So, um, so the big picture math is trending up, reading, reading is holding fairly steady. And as we had, we did this again in the wintertime. So our goal is to obviously keep the math momentum going up and then accelerate growth in reading. So more students move to tier one when we, when we hit spring. So we'll definitely give you updates in particular on reading because we have some system level assessments that are pretty regular in reading at the K2 levels with our new, uh, Ufly. So, uh, looking good there. And then, oh, sorry, Jesse, you're actually controlling it. Thank you. That was magic. Right? When I hit it, you hit it. Thank you. Um, this is a slide that I shared with our, our element, or no, our, all of our principals last week at our K12 leadership meeting. I wanted to remind them that we've seen great attendance gains and learning gains through real intentional district and building level leadership. I had to remind them once again that we're Snohomish County champs when it comes to growth. We can't say that too many times. And we talked about the next stretch is about sustaining that same focus that we had on attendance. And then I'm continuing to improve instruction and climate in our schools. So you can see that once again, September, average daily attendance numbers, every year that it's been a focus, we've shown improvement. This, uh, past September is, is, is no different. So hopefully we'll see that same kind of data every single month as we go through this year. So, so again, we, you know, our theory of, theory of action is we get kids to attend schools more regularly. We're going to have better student learning in both, in both reading and math and all of our course and content areas. So, um, again, a big thank you to our building, uh, level leaders for all the work they're doing with attendance and our teachers and all of our staff. Uh, so that's all I have for today. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item 7.01, we have board reports and or comments.
I'll jump in and, uh, just want to share, I had a great time at Park Place Middle School this last week on the 23rd. They kicked off for the first time since COVID, their watchdogs program. Uh, I know some dads, a lot of dads were there with their daughters. I was there with my daughter and, um, and some of their sons too. And, uh, it was great to see just a lot of people that shout out, uh, to some of the staff there as well. They got a couple of the teachers that are just doing an awesome job and their names just get to me right now. And, but their, their, their staff there are just really all in for, um, for getting involved. But the size of Park Place Middle School, the need at Park Place Middle School, honestly, the need in all of our schools, just to encourage, a lot of our community members have made comments about how I feel like there's no place for me to get involved. There's no place for any of these other things. Right away, my daughter's like, right away, she's like, all right, dad, you know, figure out where you can go at least two, three times this year type of a thing. And if we had, and it, and actually even at Chamberlain Elementary, it hasn't been just dads. It's, uh, you know, that's the idea behind a lot of it, having a great, uh, male presence is an important thing, but having a presence of parents just there as volunteering, this is a great opportunity to high five kids, be a positive impact on them. And, um, and it really does have a lot of data to support the program and what it does. I think our belonging data, our, um, a lot of our anxiety, depression stuff, a lot of, especially at the middle school areas has been huge. And what a great way for us to come in, make students feel seen, helping out in the classroom, making them feel supported. This is a great opportunity for parents to get involved at some of the different levels. And obviously the elementary school is bringing it back. And so just want to encourage our community members to be involved in the schools. And we've had people make comments of like, I don't know where I can be involved. Well, let me tell you very clearly, here is where you can be involved. It's a great opportunity. Go online to the school district website, fill out your background check as a volunteer. And, uh, and then sign up for some opportunities for that. We did not have a huge turnout. And so I know we had a lot of parents that wanted to do it, but they, they just weren't at the meeting. Um, but just, we're always looking for volunteers in our schools. And this is a great way to have a really powerful impact. And if you really are having a bad day, then sign up to do watchdogs in an elementary school and have kindergartners chase you because it's better than cardio. Uh, you will run and run and run and run and you will high five like a thousand kids. So not really, because we don't have that many, like any of our elementaries, but it feels that way. But just the idea of like what that does for the kids to have that, that impact is a great way for us to help kids be involved. And so just wanted to share that, something near and dear to my heart. I've noticed a huge impact, not just for my own kids, but like for all like kids in general at the school and getting to know those kids, like those kids know who you are and your official title is Mr. Watchdog, which is pretty cool.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Yeah, I'd like to second that. You know, this is my second year doing watchdogs at Multi-Elementary and it truly is, you know, a very rewarding experience. And, and yes, the students recognize me, of course, I'm very recognizable, but, uh, got, get to play with the kids and, uh, get to really connect with them. I just want to throw in, um, also we have a new, uh, PTO board at Multi-Elementary and they put together a monster mash last Friday, which was a lot of fun, a big, uh, Halloween party. So just a huge shout out and a thank you to all the parent volunteers. It makes a big difference and I hope everyone has a happy and safe Halloween.
Chuck or Molly?
Yeah, I've got a couple. I just want to give a shout out to our JROTC students who present the colors at every single football home game. To our cheerleaders who cheer endlessly for all of our different sports teams. To the band, you did an amazing job with homecoming halftime. And then also to our football players, that game was amazing. It was so awesome to see. It was awesome to be a part of. And I loved every second of it. Just truly a fun experience. And I also wanted to give a shout out to our boys and girls basketball programs up at the high school. Over the weekend, they collected over 3,000 pounds of food and over $500 in cash for the Sky Valley Food Bank. So just want to shout out to them and say thank you once again for truly being a light in the community and putting their hands and feet to work to support the community, um, and go outside of themselves. So just want to recognize that. And I'm super excited about the America 250 at Sky Valley. I think that is going to be awesome. I can't wait to hear, um, all about it and how it went. So yeah, I hope everybody is having, uh, having a good Monday and that you have a good week and the weather gets better.
No comments from my side.
All right. Um, I just ha- I'm just super excited for this week. I was invited by a student to come and speak uh, at the high school during one of their classes, Bearcats Teach. at the high school during one of their classes, Bearcats Teach. Apparently, I'm an expert in the field. I don't know, but super excited to go hang out with high school students and learn and listen, and honored to have been invited and asked to go attend. Yeah, so super excited for that. It is 5:30 PM, and tonight's meeting is adjourned.